I'm going to call the meeting to order, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, five fifteen, roll call. Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corby is coming. Bruce Robyn.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Skolksadich.
Here.
Joanne Smith, here. Beth Schamone.
Here.
Joe Sullivan. Max Yusso. All right, we'll stay at the pledge.
Pardons allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agendas presented?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second. All right, we have a motion by Bruce and a second by Rox to approve the agenda.
Can I interrupt for just one moment on the agenda?
Yes.
We do have a change that I want to recognize on the pool. Closure has been changed from August to July.
Excellent. So change in one D of action items?
One D, yes.
From July, or from, yeah, August to July.
And it will just be a two-week window.
Oh, mine says July.
Yep, mine says July too. I pressed it off and it's like, oh, no, it's updated.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All right. Any more discussion on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we're going to open forum at Student of the Month. Good evening. I would like to introduce our February student, Elk Student of the Month, and then I'll move on to our March Student of the Month. I would like to recognize Cooper Jensen as our February Elk Student of the Month. Come on up, Cooper. A little bit about Cooper. Cooper enjoys fishing for the Falls Bass Team and playing for the Falls Football Team. He likes to hunt, fish, snowmobile, and hang out with his friends. And his plans for the future include going to Hibbing Community College to be an automotive mechanic. Mrs. Hammers wrote this about Cooper. Cooper is the kind of student that makes each day in the classroom an enjoyable one. Cooper is charismatic, hardworking, and always respectful. He balances his academic schedule with a part-time job, never cutting corners or complaining. His sense of humor makes even the most stressful or serious moments lighter, and he treats his teachers, classmates, teachers and classmates with respect and is always the first one to greet someone or help out. Cooper's work ethic, passion for what he's good at, personality and strong character will ensure that he is successful in the future and it will also make his presence truly missed next year at FHS. Congratulations, Cooper.
Cooper Day.
You know what, actually, we'll get a picture at the end of the meeting. Does that sound good? Do you have Mara for this meeting? I will move on to our March Elk Student of the Month. I would like to honor and recognize Odin Hansen. Come on up, Odin. Congratulations to you. A little bit about Odin. Odin has participated in cross-country and now trap shooting at Falls High School. He enjoys hanging out with his friends, driving around in his truck, and he likes to go camping with the Boy Scouts, and he is actually an Eagle Scout, so.
That's awesome.
His plans are to attend Alexandria Tech for two years, and he'll be going there to get his associate's degree in small engine mechanics. And Mrs. Line wrote this about Odin. Odin is truly a phenomenal student. He demonstrates responsibility in all of his tasks, approaches everything with a hard-working attitude, and is always a positive presence at FHS. His kindness and willingness to help others create a supportive environment for his peers. He goes out of his way to interact positively with underclassmen, offering support and encouragement whenever they need it. With a smile always on his face, Odin brings a cheerful energy that uplifts those around him. I cannot wait to see where Odin goes in his next chapter. All right. Our next March Student of the Month is TJ Comiskey. Come on, TJ. Congratulations to you. A little bit about TJ. TJ also fishes for the Bronco Bass Team, and he's very proud of the fact that they won state. He's also part of the Bronco trap shooting team, and he has lettered for three years in a row. In his free time, he likes to go fishing, hunting, snowmobiling, as well as going on ATV rides. And he does, he works when he's not in school. His plans for the future include going to college to receive his milwark degree and work at our local paper mill. A little bit about TJ from Mrs. Manasa. TJ is a hard-working and determined student whose dedication extends beyond the classroom. He balances academics with a strong work ethic while keeping a job and volunteering where he can. With a clear vision for his future and a deep appreciation for International Falls, TJ's resilience, kindness, and commitment will undoubtedly lead him to success. Congratulations, TJ. Start with the public open forum. Tom Verdi.
Madam Chair and board members, thank you for having me today. And I think you made a fine choice, and Superintendent Schamone, you did lots of good things.
We do too.
Congratulations on that. It's nice to. I've watched a few of the meetings, and I did watch the candidate selection process too. So I did take an interest in it. Once again, thank you for having me here to represent the ATV club. A little bit about the club. We're one of the largest ATV clubs in the state, and we're also one of the most active. We recently received a national award from NOVAC, which is the National Off-Highway Vehicle Conservation Council. And we were selected by our peers on that national level, which is, you know, really nice that we were awarded that for all the work that we've done. Our mission is to build safe, sustainable trail systems with multiple destinations to connect Northland communities for everyone to enjoy. Some of the club activities that we've done just this last year, we've had an EAW that's actively been in the works for over a year now. So whenever we build a trail, there's an environmental assessment worksheet. Actually, it's anything over twenty-five miles. So when we were adopted, five of us into the wager ATV club, we identified different routes throughout the area that we thought might work out. There was a bunch of them on there. And that's been in the process for a little over a year now. That should be finished up in April. And everything's moving along as expected. There has been some suggestions to avoid, like old growth forests, some critical wetland habitats, some things like that. It's just a process that these things go through. So, you know, when we think about creating ATV trails, we just don't jump out of our pickups and start cutting trees down. It's a, it's a process that we're guided through by the DNR with EAWs and then the other policies that go along with it. Some of the other activities that we've done just this last year, we hosted a flag-raising ceremony for a destination site that we built called Military Crossroads and the Frontline Pavilion. And that's a spot out in the woods. I actually have a picture of it. It's really neat. We're really proud of it. I just want to pass it around. I just dropped one. But it's a site where we're honoring the people, the frontline workers from the COVID era, and also our military. And you can purchase plaques to memorialize a loved one or a friend and put them up on a kiosk there. The first plaque that we put up, unfortunately, was one of our own, with a park ranger that passed away in a tragic building accident. It's a beautiful site. There's a vault toilet there. We put in, actually put in four vault toilets last year. That's something that the riders that come in from all over the Midwest wanted to see us put in some restrooms. So we spent a hundred thousand dollars putting in vault toilets last year, and they've been a big hit. The only problem is that we can't figure out how it keeps toilet paper in them. And I made fun of the guys who did the planning because we fell short there. There's not enough, you know, how they have their racks in there. There's just not enough. And we also opened up a segment of trail from the Black Duck Creek. The Black Duck Creek segment, that's a segment from Black Duck Lake that runs up to the Sheep Ranch Road, if you're familiar with that. So it shortens up the trip to Mel George, just to thirteen miles when you go down that way. So, you know, things are, this is all about connectivity. We're trying to connect everything up. The club started trying to connect forest roads and different trails to county roads so we could connect up to the different communities in the Bike or Crane Lake area and now potentially International Falls. We started the Pelican River Road construction. That'll be finished up this spring. We had a soft opening on a segment of trail from the Ash River Trail to the Gamma Road, Lake Captone Township. That's actually a snowmobile trail in the winter time, so it's a shared-use trail. They're all essentially shared-use trails in the end because you can walk on them, ride your bike on them. Some people even use horses on them. We're anticipating the start of our first trail that'll be built in Koochin County. That'll be the Gamma Road to County Road Three. And that'll be partially funded by the IRRB and funds from what we call our dedicated account comes out of our ATV register. We're also in the planning process, and that's why I'm here tonight, to go from Koochin County Road Number Three near Ray up to Utility Road One Nineteen, which is most often referred to as the access road. And when we get into Koochin County and we talk about building trails, it's a challenge because we know that most of the land in Koochin County is a wetland. And as I, in the cover letter in your packet, we did an exhaustive search to try and find a route that was feasible. And some folks wonder, you know, well, why don't you go in the ditch? Well, the ditch is a wetland too. It's actually a lot longer process. It actually ends up to be more expensive because of the things that you're required to do to keep the proper drainage and things alongside the highway and extending or making the shoulder wider, adding fill, different things like that. We're funded essentially through our dedicated account, which is our registration fees that we all pay on our ATVs, go into an account that generates about seven and a half million dollars annually. And then we also get some money from the unrefunded portion of the gas tax. So then that's split up between the DNR for grant aid administration, law enforcement, and then the clubs. And some of it goes out of what they call grant aid reimbursement for maintenance after a trail is built. So tonight, I wanted to talk to you about hopefully forming a committee with some of the school board members and myself to try and see if we could come to an agreement on an easement. And in doing so, we've done this before, and we have an engineering firm that we work with on a continuing basis. It's SEH. You may have heard of them doing work up here. They have a very good group there. Natalie White, she's one of the principals. She does the environmental work, like the EAWs and things like that. And then Jason Short does the construction part. But they would actually go in and survey any of the parcels that we were looking at for an easement, get a legal description, and then we would move forward to have an attorney draft the easement. So it's all done in a, you know, in a business-like manner because we're actually would be making an investment in the trail. So therefore, you know, we'd like to know that we're going to have the use of the trail on a continual basis. Some of the leases are renewed every year, or easements every five years or somewhere for a long period of time. And this is a key piece, as I said. It's the only way that we've found that we can get up north. We worked with MOPUS on some of this. And there's some pieces of property that MOPUS will let us on, and then there's some other areas that they'd like us to stay out of as far as establishing a trail. Sensitive areas and things like that, but they just would rather not have anything. So we've agreed to basically stay on the northeast side of Highway Fifty-three until we get up to Rogers Corner, which in completing this next segment of trail, it's a five-mile segment that would get us to Erksburg, then to Rogers Corner because we can use the county roads. We're authorized to use county roads. Right now, there's a speed limit of twenty miles an hour on those. That's likely to change because they want it to be more uniform throughout the state, so they're looking at changing that. That's, that's something that's way down the road. Anyway, is there any questions that you might have for me or?
So you were just looking for getting people on a committee at this point?
Or, you know, if you wanted to move ahead and agree to do an easement, and then we could enter into an agreement just simply to work on it and get SEH on board, then schedule them to do the surveying. And there's things that we do when we build a trail. They're, they're sustainable, meaning that they're constructed in a way, they're actually overbuilt. They're, they're built in a way that would support a logging truck because that's important because they need to be in there too. You know, and that's, we work with them on a regular basis. And we also have gates that have kind of become the standard throughout the ATV world. It's a two-stage gate, so it's just wide enough to fit an ATV through. You actually have to slow down to a crawl to go through the gate. And there's a limit of sixty-four inches wide. So just riding through that segment of trail on the snowmobile this winter, I just, you know, could visualize, we probably need like two gates, maybe at the most. Or if the, if the school district wished to have more, we could certainly do that too.
What's the purpose of the gate, Tom? Is it to slow them down or?
To keep large vehicles off, keep the trucks away.
Oh, okay, okay. Will the easement be in the same place as we already have one for the snowmobile club?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the same exact alignment. We have a letter, I believe I included that in your packet, from the snowmobile club.
Yep.
Yeah. They'll benefit from this. There'd be a bridge put in. That's going to be off the school district property, and then there'd be some colors put in. Actually, where your road is there now needs very little improvement, but it would see some, just some overlay for alcohol and supplement material.
So first of all, thanks for the great preparedness tonight. Fantastic. It's nice to have presentations prepared, so thank you. So because he's speaking in open forum, we can't formally take action, but I do want you to know that I do encourage the board to consider being a part of this and, you know, having two to three members sit on the committee. We do have some things that we need to consider. A would be the process of what we did with the snowmobile club, the liability component. But we also have in the process right now a lobbying proposal, so we have to kind of meld those pieces together. So I would recommend that we put together a group to be a part of this, get together between now and the next board meeting, and then move forward with the recommendation. That'll give us time to work with our district attorney.
Okay. So you, could you, we don't have to have names right now at the table, but like shortly after our meeting?
Yep, and I can get that to Mr. Dority so he has, will represent International Falls.
Yeah, and something that would be helpful is if we had a letter from the school board that said we were, we have this process going on. So when we're applying for grants and things like that, then they're aware that we have that in place and that we're working together.
Yeah.
And thank you for the comment on the preparing. I was a nineteen eighty-two graduate of Falls High. The last time I was in here was in Virgil Mop, was.
Mr. Don. With the Rees platform.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was fun. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
I look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Anybody else for open forum? All right, we'll move to committee and administrative reports. There are reports from student representatives. Oh, yes.
Max.
There we have it. Oh, there's Max. You're here. Awesome.
So March was a busy time for the FHS, full of contests and sports events. The Falls High Band traveled to the Wapak on Monday, March third, to compete in the band contest, earning an overall rating of excellence. In addition to the competition, the band hosted a concert on Thursday, March sixth, featuring performances from students in grades six through twelve. The Falls High Choir also traveled for their contest on Tuesday, March fourth, earning an overall rating of excellence as well. In addition to their competition, they will be holding a spring concert on April sixteenth in the FHS gym. In athletics, the Bronco Boys Basketball Team competed against Esco High School on Tuesday, March fourth. Meanwhile, the Boys Swim Team advanced to the state meet, leaving on Thursday, March sixth, and competing the following day at noon. Additionally, the Quiz Bowl Team has left today for their meet in Mystic Lake, where they will compete until Wednesday. A few upcoming events include prom on March fifth, which will be held here at FHS, as well as our spring pep fest, which will be held on April thirtieth. The student council has organized a few activities recently, including the Valentine's game and St. Patrick's Day game, which included all classes. Finally, for those looking to be a part of the student council, applications for new members have opened up for the upcoming school year. Student council gives students an opportunity to be involved in the planning and many fun activities, events and activities.
What was the date of the prom?
April fifth.
Yeah, April fifth.
April, okay.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Max. Hey, congratulations upstate too.
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Seed, does she have?
So Principal Tate is on her way back from family vacation, so she won't be with us this evening. She'll have a full report for April.
Awesome. All right. Ms. West?
We have, we began a registration for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ran a registration from February twenty-first to February twenty-eighth. Mr. Grewatz and I visited classrooms. We wanted the kids to be able to ask questions. And it was really nice because we were able to sit down with them and actually work with them and help them process through choosing their classes. We had an overwhelming response to our new electives, including Intro to Education, Psychology, Career Exploration, Work-Based Learning, Photography, and our new online courses, Edmentum, just to name a few. Our goal is to present section proposals to the board in the next week or two. I also wanted to just revisit the fact we did have a, we had a registration information session for parents and students on February twenty-sixth. We wanted parents to be able to come and ask questions, and we were fortunate enough to have teachers present, especially some of our college and the schools' teachers, so they could help clarify what their role is and how those college credits are earned in the high school. And again, we continue, we hope in the future, we will have that AA ready to go. We're very close, which is going to take a little more time to process through, but we are close, and we have some awesome teachers who are very well-trained. By the way, we have all of our options posted on our school website. Anybody can check them out by going to the school website, clicking Guidance and Counseling, and then Registration, and that will pop open all of the different courses available for all different grade levels in some nice descriptions. Our MCAs will begin April first at Falls High School and continue through the month of April. I am going to be pushing out some talking points about the why of MCAs for parents and students. I think we sometimes forget, why are we doing this? What does it matter? Why is it important? And I just think we all need reminders about that. So I have copies here if any of you would like to look at those. And then teachers will be offering incentives for student participation, and we'll be hosting some fun events following MCA testing. As we, as Max stated, probably held here Saturday, April fifth, at Falls High School. It's coming up soon. A lot of preparations going on for that. And our spring pep fest will be held on Wednesday, April thirtieth, where we'll honor our spring activities and give out academic excellence awards. And as we look to spring, we are collaborating with Cape to plan a district-wide volunteer day in the community. So stay tuned for details on that. And as far as our members at Falls High School, we are at plus two.
Oh.
Thank you.
I always like to hear that.
So we are planning a job career fair for May seventh. I did a very soft launch. The week before, we did our spring break, and I already have ten tables that are confirmed, and that's growing. I had more messages when I came up here, I just noticed. So I anticipate that's going to be a very well-attended event. I have to, do have to say that Ted Roche, the city, is the one that always gives me a little push to do this. He did it last year and this year, and his connections. We have some really neat businesses that are coming, along with some unique, at least sending like a water treatment educator. So like, we're kind of trying to find different, to show kids that it's not just, there's so many different careers or trades that you can go into. So I am busy planning that. I mentioned last time we were doing a bike rodeo, and now it's turned into more of a community event. I'm not sure how I get into these. We are slated to do that May seventeenth. We are going to do the traditional bike rodeo. Law enforcement is involved, the police department. We have Kate involved. We have Amy Martinson at Krutaska. We are also doing, so we're going to have the bike rodeo, hopefully at Cary Park. I haven't, that hasn't been confirmed yet, but we will do that along with having different activities there also, like maybe some craft tables. We are trying to get maybe hot dogs. That's all in the works for a light meal. But we're also going to do some information for the county. We will have just some social services information out there. The public library is going to do an event for the younger kids, so hopefully the plan is that they go to the library, do a little event there, come to the bike rodeo. And then we're also working with the bowling alley to provide the family bowling so that we're trying to get different ages involved and trying to get them throughout our community. I am in the works of planning on your own class. Hopefully, the instructor from four H will be doing that class. And four H is just finishing up their spring classes this week. We really enjoy partnering with them. They do a lot of fun things for our district. I am also busy trying to get swim lessons planned. My instructor, my lead instructor, has moved to Arizona, and so I, hopefully, fingers crossed, have someone that will step up and do that. And we also have a lifeguard class that will be scheduled for early June. And I'm really excited. We are losing one of our main lifeguards this year. He'll, he'll go to school in the fall. So I've had a couple other kids step up and say, hey, I'd really like to do that, and so that is really good. Another thing that's really going to be taking some time up right now is our rec summer ball. We have sign-ups Tuesday and Thursday, and it's a lot of prep work. And, but once the season starts, the prep work off days off.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Beth, the closure of the pool for those two weeks isn't going to interfere with your swimming lessons?
No.
Good. Good.
Will outside districts be invited to the community?
Little Fork. Yeah.
The job fair, sorry.
We, well, yes, Little Fork will be. Little Fork will be, like we did last year. They brought eighty kids last year. It was wild and crazy. It was, I enjoyed it. I liked the chaos of all the kids, you know. And then, like one of the games, some of the kids that didn't want to go, that it was kind of stupid. I'm like, if you go find my brother in there and come back and tell me who he is, I'll give you a T-shirt. They did, and the one girl spent like an hour in there.
Good.
Looking for tips.
Not sure what to expect. They just have to get in and try it.
It was, you know, stupid at the time, but then really challenging a little bit, so that was fun. And Little Fork will be, and then we have had some homeschoolers that have reached out, so they're going to bring it to their committee.
And I just told them, check into the main office and then come in. So yes.
We want North Home, Beth. We want North Home.
We could reach out to North Home.
You should.
I've been thought of that.
What a great opportunity for them.
Yeah.
It's a nice invite. Don't have to bother.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tim?
Wow, very busy winter sports season. Just came basically to an end. We'll start, we'll just keep digging through here. Bronco girls hockey team finished the season with a 320-1 record. Team had 23 players, grades seven through 12, and they were able to play nearly a full JV schedule. The staff included fourth-year head coach Aaron Hall, Rachel Halloway, and JV coach Brian Kershaw. The Bronco boys hockey team won the Iron Range Conference Championship for the first time since 2008 and finished with a 17-9 record. Team also won their home holiday tournament, which we restarted this year after 26 years, as well as having possession of the traveling trophies with rivals Fort Francis and Lake of the Woods. Team was led by fifth-year head coach Chad Baldwin, John McDonald, Mason Meyer, Jared Baldwin, and Tucker Hell. The new head coach paid Zamba the Bronco hockey cheerleaders with seven cheerleaders. Boys swimming and diving team finished the season with a 3-1 duel record. Brendan Scholler, who won the Minnesota State High School League Subsection 27 AAA Award for Athletics, Academics, and Arts, and was recognized at the Section 7 championship hockey game down at the Yams Oil Arena. Hopefully, you got to maybe see that on TV on that night. Great honor for Brendan. Second year in a row, we've had a male winner for that award. So very nice for us to be having that. He placed third in the 100-yard backstroke at the Section 6A meet and meet to qualify for the state meet, where he finished 16th. Two relays also qualified for state. First time this has happened since 1998. The 200 individual medley relay of Sid Ginder, Connor Tomzak, Wyatt Jansen, and Brendan Scholler took third at sections and 21st at state. A 400 free relay of Max Yusso, Tomzak, Jansen, and Scholler placed second at sections and 17th at the state meet. Head coach CJ Jaws completed his 10th season with Abby Koshik and Nate Mosman as his assistants, with just 14 athletes competing, but they were able to have that much success. Don Taylor, once again, worked with the fourth through sixth relays at the double. The girls basketball team was led by new head coach Derek Dowdy and assistant coach Lucika, as the team finished the season with a 9-16 record. Team had 20 girls playing varsity and JV. Dylan Holt, Cole Ruben, Nate Tybo, and Ron Gilbertson worked with the 7th and 8th grade girls, while the following worked with the elementary teams. Derek Johnson, Julia Ober, excuse me, John Wechel, Sarah Lent, Kyle Sinney, and Kyle Bermeister. Boys basketball second-year head coach Joe Anson, Will Lavi, and Ellie Jean led the boys' basketball program. The team had 14 boys, finished the season with a 2-24 record. Carla Line, Ben Line, Don Sobi, and Tim Gerson coached the 7th and 8th grade teams. And the following coached at the elementary level Erin Norjam, Nicole Argu, Denise Schaefer, Lisa Moss, Brad Kokesh, Alisa Heckanuehler, Shannon Hendrick, and, excuse me, Justin Bukarski. And I want to shake a shout-out to all those head coaches for stepping up. Lots of nights of coming out there. They just don't get the just rewards that they deserve. I'm sure that working with the kids is great, but they just don't get, I wish we could do something a little bit more for them. The nine boys' basketball cheerleaders were led by head coach Lori Potter. The knowledge whole team just completed their season. They finished fifth out of 18 teams at the season ending region tournament under head coach Ariana Saratka. There were nine students that competed this year. The one act play competed in the subsection 1 tournament back in January. They finished in fourth place under head coach Elsa Swanson. The math team was restarted this year by Alex Manasa. The team finished in fourth out of seven teams in their division. I'm not sure whether that 13 is that far, but you can figure that out. We'll figure that out some other day. The FHS High School Band, as you found out from Max Yusso, under the direction of Justin Truett, an excellent rating. Got the contest held at Northeast Range on March 3rd. And acquired the same thing, had an excellent rating on March 4th. Also at Northeast Range, under the direction of Elsa Swanson. Zuri Silver, Zlinia Young, Mariah Hostetter, and Greta Bennett all received excellent ratings for their souls. This Thursday, we have a Iron Range Conference meeting. We'll talk about winter sports and then discuss the spring and fall sports that are coming up. A little tidbit, Mora has been officially added to the conference in boys' hockey. And I believe Moose Lake Area is voting tonight to do the same. So the conference now would have six teams rather than just the four teams, which makes it a little more competitive.
Yes.
A better conference that way. So hopefully Moose Lake Area will put that in there. And that will pretty much guarantee us 10 games per year. Two against each of those teams would be a great way to do it. Airhead Conference, nothing really new to report there. We have a meeting Wednesday, February 26th. Some thank yous for me, because I don't, publicly, we don't get to do this as often. So I want to take every opportunity I can to Jody and Vicky down in the office for taking care of the kids, directing them back to me, getting everything entered in. Beth, Lisa, and Don, always there for me to bounce ideas off when I've got questions, things that I need to get taken care of. Beth Ansetinsky mentioned the help with the summer ball that's coming up with Rec Sports and taking care of the things. I can't do it without her. The custodial staff, all the stuff that went on this winter with Bronco Arena and everything else, the pool area, and the transportation staff, just getting everything up and making sure we can get the games going. The game workers, they don't get recognized enough either, but they come in and make it possible for the kids to have their games. To the kids, the hockey teams coming to watch the basketball team, the basketball teams going to watch the hockey teams. It's good to see the kids get out there, go to the swim meets, go wherever. It seems like there's a concentrated effort for the teams to get out there and follow each other. So great to see that happen. Parents for getting the kids to their game, picking them up to weird hours, long hours, tough times of the day, doing that. Of course, to the coaches, you can say thank you over and over again, but it's still a lot of hours and a lot of commitment to the kids of our community. Spring season, of course, basically, everything kind of gets in full swing today with spring break being last week. So girls and boys track and field teams, we're getting it set up. We're gonna be hosting the Iron Range Conference meet on May 13th. So that day is gonna be a little crazy. I would assume we're gonna have to start about 2:00 in the afternoon. So we'll get all those details worked out, because the boys and girls, of course, we'll get started with baseball, softball. Speech continues. Of course, they kind of take up both winter and spring sports, but we've got new coach, head coach Shambles doing that. They've been going to those Saturday meets, leaving at 4:00 in the morning or whatever they do. Like, God bless them. As Beth mentioned, the summer ball signups this week, Tuesday and Thursday. Had over 300 kids last year, hoping to have at least that many. We have added a third and four-year-old T-ball division, where they play once a week, to kind of introduce them to the game. Fifth and sixth will get a little more, five and six-year-olds get a little more competitive. So we split it up into two T-ball ranks. We'll see what happens. It's a trial. It's an experiment. We'll see if it's a flop or not. I don't know. But I do want to give thanks to the volunteers who have been helping us with the league. I begged last year to have some people step up, and most of them stepped back up to do it again this year. Sidney versus is gonna be in charge of the three, four-year-olds. Courtney Christie is gonna be in charge of the five and six-year-olds. Megan Hommer is taking on the minor league boys. Katie Hammonds is doing the minor league girls. Kyle Sidney is doing the major girls. Nita Reinhoffner is doing the major boys. And then Jessica Bermeister is doing the umpires. So they're kind of taking care of those divisions, so I don't have to try to be in 18 different places at once with high school sports going on. It's kind of tough to be there, so they've kind of stepped up to take the controls. Any questions?
Can I add that I know that there is a dire need for people to join track and field?
There is a dire need, for all sports, actually. Right now, we've only got 17 boys out for baseball, 9 through 12. So we definitely could use a few more, a few more kids. It's gonna make things very difficult to have two teams even compete. They just say, we'll make the numbers. So hopefully, with, we've been just with spring break and their kids just didn't take care of business. Hopefully, they'll show up in the next couple of weeks.
Here we go. Thank you. Beth?
I'm gonna do my best to keep it short tonight, because April is going to be a long board meeting. So brace yourselves. First of all, I just want to say, start by saying thank you. We just completed a nice spring break. Staff and students and families, I've received a number of emails this morning from families in our community, recognizing and appreciating the time together with their families, whether they were home or traveling. But during that time, there was a number of district employees that still worked over the break. And three groups that worked were some of our peer professionals, in addition to our custodians, and Principal West stayed and worked with our teams. And they have started purging some of our Falls High School rooms. And what they did over break is quite remarkable when you see the pictures and walk through the spaces. They have organized. They have cataloged areas. The teams just really collectively work together, so we can create more space within our school district to offer programming, classes, and updated storage. So I just want to say thank you again to the facilities, parent team, and Principal West. Next, on the list is Beth Ansetinsky. She has been very helpful in navigating community education in addition to our American Indian education to help us get through the remainder of the year before we really look at what our positions for the 25-26 school year looks like. She and Mr. Reinhoffner have been phenomenal, helping me problem solve. But her willingness to undertake that in addition to her new job has just been instrumental in making this move forward and finishing off the year strong. So I really appreciate that. Then I just really want to take the time to say thank you to the community for the feedback that we have been getting on our board presentations, what is happening, and how we're communicating with the community on social media, in addition to the feedback and transparency that we're providing on gathering feedback from our community. So the phone calls, the emails, the transparent communication to our principals, to our board members, and our staff, and myself, I just, we really appreciate that and we welcome that. So as we move forward and talk a little bit about the April board meeting, that board meeting will be longer, because we're gonna be really talking about what the 25-26 school year is gonna look like. We will have presentations by CISO, Ellers, Nexus, in addition to myself and the principals on some of the changes that are going to be occurring. We will also have presentations that have the data prepared for you on the four-day school week inquiry process. And we'll also be talking a little bit about some of the changes regarding staffing based on data that we have put together on what we need to do differently to make sure we're moving forward with that 21st century learning and the offerings that we're gonna have. Principal West touched base a little bit on it. We did a data review this afternoon, Mr. Grewatz and Mrs. West and I, and looked at the registration for courses. And the numbers were very pleasing when we looked at the new offerings that we're offering to kids. And we really had to make some tough decisions today, because some of the classes were over capacity. So I think that just tells you what our community and our kids are craving. And again, Principal West and the staff here at Falls High School, in addition to Mr. Grewatz and Ms. Rolando, his assistant, they have just done a phenomenal job in marketing and talking about the new offerings to our kids. So there's a lot of excitement around that. So thank you. So do plan for a good robust meeting in April. Next, I just want to let you know that the referendum, the building construction that's gonna be happening, we did have the bidding go out for the stadium, but the numbers came in a little bit higher. So our committee is working and partnering with Nexus on how can we make some cuts. We have a committee, Dale Johnson, Roxanne Scopes at Beach, Jessica Cosby and I. We were spending time looking at areas that we can cut back in, but we have made the decision to move the stadium into the bidding process with Falls High School and Bronco Arena. We think that there can be some significant savings there. So just know that Nexus is getting ready for the next bidding to go out. By the end of March, early April, that bidding process will go out. And I can answer more questions for you, or the committee can, if you have any additional information that you want on that. The next most important topic that we do need to highlight for tonight's meeting is our four-day school week inquiry process listening sessions. I want to make sure it's very clear that this is an investigation and inquiry process. This decision has not been made. Our regional superintendent groups are looking at this. For rural schools, rural schools are struggling when it comes to student enrollment. You're seeing a lot of students go online. You've seen a lot of students go to homeschools. And then rural areas that have more metropolitan areas next to them, they're losing students in addition to post-secondary education. So one of the things that has happened with our area regional superintendent group, which includes schools like Little Fork, Mount Nyirbel, St. Louis County Schools, Mississauga East, they're either moving to a four-day school week or they are in the investigation process. When I arrived, it's conversation that had began with Superintendent Rober and your school community. So we have, first of all, collected our data from our staff. We're currently in the process of collecting data from our families, our high school students, and our community members, in addition to partnering with our staff on their data points. So the next phase, phase two of the four-day school week investigation, will consist of three listening sessions. There will be a listening session held on March 27th at 5:15 in the media center here at Falls High School. There will be a listening session on 4/7 at 7:30 a.m. here in the media center. And the last one will be on 4/15, April 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in Falls High School Media Center. So we've received a lot of questions on what that is going to look like. Will people be able to ask questions? What we will be doing is we will be facilitating, we will have facilitators. I will be doing a short presentation and talk about some of the pros, some of the cons. We'll be talking about some of the data points for 361, in addition to some of our regional superintendent groups and their school districts. After that presentation, there will be district facilitators that will have been trained. And the attendees will be split up into small groups, so they can spend some time with their facilitator. Facilitator will listen to what the members of the audience have to say. They will take that information. In addition, they will take the questions that people are asking. Because what has happened is it's turned into, you know, people wanting questions that have gone on to sessions that have become hours and hours and hours long. So what we have decided as superintendent's group is we've left it to an hour, hour and a half. The presentation will be done, because some of the answers are in the presentation. Then it allows small groups to have greater discussion and ask questions amongst the groups. So our facilitators will have that information. That information will be brought back to a larger group that I will work with. And what we will do is condense all of that data. That data will be shared with the board. We will put the questions that came in out with the answers to those questions, the ones that are applicable. We don't have all the answers today. Once that session is concluded, we will bring that presentation to the board on our April meeting. And at that time, what we will do is we will look at, is this something we want to pursue for the next school year? Or is this something we want to look at for a future possibility? Or is this something that we are not even going to further investigate? You will have all of that data prior to that meeting, so you can go through it adequately.
May I clarify? You are including the possibility of next school year?
We do have that possibility. The decision does have to be made in order to move forward on May 1st. We have to submit our application at that time. So we have three options this year, this next coming school year, the year after, so '26, '27, or to not move forward with it. And the data will be presented, in addition to CISO's working on our financial savings. Many districts are looking at financial savings from $300,000 a year to half a million dollars. So there's significant savings. But we have to look at the data and what's best for our school district. So that's what we'll be doing.
Beth, can I just give you one piece of feedback? I had a parent point out to me that the surveys that went out, she said it was great. And she filled it out, because she has a Google account.
Yes.
But her husband doesn't have a Google account, so he was unable to fill out the survey. So are we gonna do anything like on paper, like a mailer or anything?
We're not gonna do a mailer, but we can do another format. I will, I will look into that.
Thank you.
That's really great information.
Yeah, that's what I told her, too. I said, I didn't think of that.
Yeah. We can even create some paper copies and have them in our offices.
Perfect.
That might be the way to do it. So great, but that's great feedback and I really appreciate it. People, to date, when I checked this morning, we had over 500 responses.
Good.
Which is a significant number. And the feedback has been wonderful. And that's for and against. So people are really giving good, robust information on how they feel about this possibility. So I think you're gonna find it very interesting. The next thing I want to talk to you about is, as you see on the board agenda tonight, is the change in the ALCE, the Alternative Learning Center. So one of the things we have talked about in our retreat is, as I work with our leadership team and our finances and our financial team, CISO, and look at our district offerings and what we need to do in order to move our school district forward, a financial data analysis is an important part of that. analysis is an important part of that. In addition to really looking at what does our student attendance look like when we have programs and offerings, in addition to that cost analysis, are we benefiting by what we're paying and what we're offering to our students? But we've also done environmental assessments and how we look at how we are using our space as a whole within our school communities. And that includes both Falls High School and Falls Elementary. Even though the construction is happening, how are we utilizing some of the other spaces within our school? And we all know that graduating classes here, 30 years ago, used to be two, 250, 300. Our graduating classes are significantly lower, so we're looking at graduating classes of 69, 73. So when we looked at the cost analysis, one of the things we had to really consider in alignment with our new program offerings is our students at the Alternative Learning Center. They are not having the opportunity to access some of those different programming that we're offering. We have a lot of students at the Alternative Learning Center that work in the afternoons or have afternoon jobs. There's been a lot of inquiry about our work-based learning program that's going to be rolled out next year. So what I've done is I've taken a deep look with our facilities team. I've met with the board at our board retreat. I've met with our building principal, and we've had greater conversation about shutting down a wing of Falls High School and bringing our Alternative Learning Center programming back here for our ninth through 12th grade students. So they will be able to access our work-based learning, they'll be able to access some of the trades programs that we're offering. But the school will be isolated into the larger spaces down on the swimming pool wing of the building. That's how I can most easily describe it to you. And when we toured that together, for those of you who are at the retreat, we have some additional spaces that's very similar to what the location currently is. And so we can look at, what we're looking at is setting up two individual units with programming computer spaces, in addition to having a space where the students can hang out. So what will happen on the wing that accesses, the CTE wing, is that those pool doors will be closed off, but they'll be closed off through graphics. So there'll be graphic designs that really recognize it as the Alternative Learning Center. We also have gotten, recently got a grant on a family-friendly restroom. So we are looking at, it's something the pool has asked for, having another space for families to change when they have swimming. So we are, our grant writer, Ashley Hall and I are currently working with a team, they're going to come in and they're going to do some bidding so we can submit that grant so we can update that area of the pool. So we're really excited about that. There is some updates that we need to do here, but there's additional funding available out there. So I know there's probably a lot of questions from the community on what this will look like, but we will be creating new processes and procedures, we'll be creating new roadmaps of where the buses will be running, how kids will be dropped off, where kids will be coming in. Kids will no longer be coming in on the pool wing, they will be coming in in the front of the school. And then we will have the ALC space just on the backside of the school for their entry. And then they have a buzzer system back there also where they can go in and out. So we're very excited about it. There is a significant savings for us, and I think that's something that we need to note, in addition to allowing our students who are really interested in the trades to have access to what we're offering our kids. Our 193 area district students that do not attend International Falls. So as you know, in late April, I, along with Principal West and Principal Tate, will be doing a virtual session on what the 25-26 school year will look like. We're very excited. We're going to talk about the new offerings, we're going to talk about school safety, we're going to talk about staffing. But one of the things that we're excited to share is we have a letter that will be going out to our 193 families.
Yay.
That is going to be inviting them to the presentation and letting them know that we now will officially have for the start of the new school year, a district online school that these students can access. So they are area district students. We are not at the phase yet for offering it to kids who live outside of our district boundaries, but we're currently in phase one. These students will have the opportunity to take French class, they can do drafting, they can go into so many different fashion design. They can either come in, we will be offering an online teacher here at school where they can come in and work with that teacher, or they can actually do it from home. So we are very excited about that. The team has worked really hard on this project, and we are hoping to be able to extend that in the future. Right now, it's starting at about that eighth through 12th grade, pending interest of our families, we may expand that. But we're excited, the offerings are robust, and we just really want to get those kids back into our district and show them what we have to offer in their child's education. And they also will have the opportunity to play Bronco sports, and I think that alone is also very exciting.
Thank you, Beth and Lisa and everyone else who, because this has been a long time coming for the board, the board has talked for many years trying to get those students back that we never had or lost. And now we've got something really exciting to offer, and it wouldn't have been if it wasn't for you and Lisa and some of our new people. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth, we really appreciate your partnership and your willingness to be open-minded to what I tell Lisa and Missy, frequently our crazy ideas are hanging outside of the box. But it also couldn't happen without the board's support, so thank you very much in believing in the work that we're doing. Last but not least, you're going to have a presentation tonight. You know the facilities, hence the referendum, but we also have a lot of work to do within our district well beyond what the referendum will cover. Every day seems to be unveiling something new that needs to be fixed or repaired, in addition to some of our historical sites like Bronco Stadium and Bronco Arena. I mean, to me, those are the pillars of my childhood memories growing up. And we have had to have some really tough conversations, but we've also had some really productive conversations. And our district grant writer and my assistant, Ashley Hall, is going to give you a presentation tonight on the idea that some community partners and our leaders within the district have had in how to move the needle forward and how we can really contribute back to our community and recognize some of our community members, but also raise funds to preserve some of these historical sites. So I look forward to her presentation tonight. Outside of that, I just, if you have any questions, just thank you. We are, as you can tell, we're super excited, but we're really tired.
Thank you. You'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Dale, second?
I'll second.
Rox, okay. I have a motion by Dale and second by Rox to approve the consent agenda, discussion?
I'd like to table items nine, 10, and 11 for our next meeting if that meets everybody's approval. I just think there's more conversation that needs to happen.
Okay.
Did you get the response of the email today?
No.
There was a response.
Oh.
I don't know if that'll help you with answering it, but...
Okay, so we will remove nine, 10, and 11 from the consent agenda.
Is, so then it's basically tabled and we'll talk about it next month, is that it?
If we, so we will approve the consent agenda without those items, and then we will go back to those items and vote to table or not.
We're going to vote to table or not today?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
For next meeting.
For the next meeting.
All right, so any other changes? No? All right. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented without nine, 10, and 11? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, so now, Jessica, you're making the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table those items until the next meeting.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that so she can get her information.
Okay. Toni, second? Any other discussion?
So we're just looking for some more info?
Yeah, I just want some more information.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. So we will just move those to the next meeting. All right. And we'll move on to action items, improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcomed and supported, and a resolution of gifts. Whereas the school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD Number 361, accepts with the appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district." Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
To accept the following gifts and donations. Elks Lodge Kuching Warrior Initiative, President's Day Breakfast before the Varsity Boys-Girls Double Header versus Two Harbors at the Elks Lodge, Rainier Recreation Club Football Cheerleaders, $500, Box Top Donations, FES, $142.10, Bronco Boys Basketball Boosters, Target Center Hotel Stay, $812.60, Bronco Girls Hockey Boosters, Section Bus and Huddle, $1,540, Bronco Boys Hockey Boosters Charter Bus and Huddle, $3,480, Jennifer Bigler District Donation, $100, Arena Scoreboard Sponsorship, Rainier Recreation Club, $500, Border Box Apparel and Supplies for PBIS Rewards for both FES and FHS, Border GM Apparel for PBIS Rewards for FHS, Green Tech Manufacturing, Sheet Steel Drops for Welding Practice for Metal Shop Welding Classes. And we have a lot of donations, which is great. Prom donations, James and Joanne Dornhecker, $1,000, Beyond Esthetics, $250, Porcelain Sales and Service, $500, Northern Lumberyard, $250, Wagner Construction, $250, Derek and Sandra Johnson, $50, Family Chiropractic Center, $100.
And there's more comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whereupon the resolution is declared adopted. And we'll move to action item 1B, approve the relocation of the ALC to a closed wing at Falls High School. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that. I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Rox and second by Tina to approve the relocation of the ALC to a closed wing at the Falls High School. Any discussion?
I would like to just ask a question on when we have some issues with, let's say, bringing a knife to school or something like that, where like with that new section of like separating, is that being off the premises of the building then?
No, the same rules will apply, policies will govern.
Okay.
And it will take...
So it's all when checked out that we're able to do that?
Yep, so school principal, myself, dean of students.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So the same rules will apply into, I'm just repeating so that everybody can hear that, same rules apply to ALC as the other students.
Is there a microphone over there for you, Beth?
Over here.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 1C, approve the closure of Bronco Arena for cleaning, maintenance, and repairs for the month of August 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
And second by Toni, to approve the closure of Bronco Arena in August. And discussion? We kind of touched base last time that just cost-wise and seasonality and getting things fixed, we just need that time.
Prepping for the school year as well.
Yeah.
We have some major repairs that need to happen. In addition to some of our equipment is very, very old, and the program, the very minimal programming that is happening there, it is not cost-effective to continue, and it is not ISD 361 programming.
All right. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How does this relate to construction on the referendum?
That's a great question. They will be able to access the site, and it will actually benefit them to not have people in the building.
But they won't be interfering with each other, the repairs and the...
No, no. Great question.
Great question, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. 1D, approve the closure of the Falls High School Pool for two weeks in July for repairs, cleaning, maintenance for the 25-26 school year. Do I have a motion?
Is that for the last two weeks, you said?
In July, yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right.
I just wanted to note that it was listed as August, but with the schedule of the actual swim team, they did move it to the end of July, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you for moving it. I know there was some concern about girls swimming.
Correct.
Because repairs, you know, they always take longer than they're supposed to.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So a motion by Jessica and a second by Tina to approve the closure of the pool for the last two weeks in July for repairs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And 1E, approve the historical Bronco Arena preservation projects and updates and Bronco Arena fundraiser. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Bruce?
I'll second.
So we are going to have that presentation now before, yeah, perfect.
So thank you. So Beth, Superintendent Shrobel and I have had obviously a lot of conversations, you guys know better than I do, about all the needs of the district, but specifically of Bronco Arena. And as we've been talking, stuff I did in my former career, was a lot of fundraising, a lot of events, and really just telling the story. That's, I worked in nonprofit before, and that's what we do is we tell the story of what's going on. And I feel like that's what our district really needs, especially when it comes to Bronco Arena or even this stadium. You can go ahead and move to the next one, please.
Maybe.
So I don't have to tell you all the story or the history of Bronco Arena, you know that better than I do. But for those of the people that are listening or watching online that aren't from here, I did a little history lesson for myself about Bronco Arena and found out it was actually built in December 22nd of 1968. I went and I saw, we tried to build Bronco Arena today, they built it for $545,000, it would be close to $5 million investment. That was eye-opening. I looked that number up today and I was like, wow. I mean, it's not an option in our heads not to keep this open or not to do some work as a community to save this arena. We know what goes on there, we know there's boys and girls varsity, hockey, there's figure skating. I found that really amazing picture of the circus there last year. There's been really just some amazing events that have happened in Bronco Arena, and I think that we owe it to the community, to the district, and to the people who have played in this arena to really start to tell that story. If you have the next one, please. So I came up, not with the idea all my own, but with a group of people, to come up with a fundraising campaign. And so kind of named it the Bronco Arena Legacy Campaign. It's a multifaceted campaign or effort, so it's not just fundraising, it's also preservation, and it's telling the story of Bronco Arena and the people that have played in Bronco Arena and that have set the stands of Bronco Arena, that have families that have played in the arena. And so what I'm proposing is that we come up with a committee that does all of that, that tells the stories while saving the arena. And I know that's very strong verbiage to say save the arena, but when we're looking at the things that we need to do, it's literally a matter of saving Bronco Arena. There's really amazing things that are being done in fundraising for facilities. I was just with my daughter doing a college visit this weekend, and everywhere we went on that campus, there was a plaque where somebody had donated something. And I think that's what the school needs to look like. And I think that's what the school needs to look like, but we'll start with Bronco Arena. And so what we've talked about a lot, and we've talked to some of the members of FES, is really just starting, as we're starting to tell these stories of Bronco Arena, starting to put some pictures and some names with those stories. And so putting preservation plaques on the bleachers, having collages down the hallways that has pictures of the people who played in the arenas. And while we're doing that, we're going to sell those things, so people are donating to our cause. I wish I came up with all these ideas on my own, but I didn't. Like I said, they're redone all over the country, the high school. I went to school at, I went back there recently, and going to the, there's just this beautiful collage of photos, and it's basketball, it's volleyball, softball, it's just all the athletes that have ever played in that school, and that's what I think we need to do at Bronco Arena, is down those hallways, show the pictures of who's played in there. Highlight the people that are coaching, that have played, whether it's high school, sorry, college, Olympic, coaches, players, everything, tell those stories, put them on there around the arena to display. You can go ahead with the next one, Casey. So obviously, I volunteered in the effort. But I think it's going to be, it is going to be a big project, and it's going to take some really important key people to do this project, but we're also going to have to delegate the work out as we do it. And so I have some ideas for people that may be really good in these roles, and I couldn't throw them up here without talking to them and getting approval from you guys to do this. I think we know somebody that's part of FES that may be really good at the historical preservation part of it. His name may be Crazy Thompson. And so, yeah, I've come up with these roles, and marketing and communications, I think I put an S at the end of that because it's going to be, it's going to take more than just one person to do this. We need Facebook pages, we need parts under our website, we need to be in newsletters, we need to be in the newspaper, and it's really going to take a team to do that, and it's going to take some really good people in those roles to do that. And then obviously, we're going to need a committee to lead these efforts and these ideas. You can go ahead with the next one, Casey. So just the first ones I've come up with, I have like five or ten more that I decided I should probably stop somewhere for this presentation, as I kind of mentioned, the personalized plaques, you know, we can, we can sell parts of the bleachers, we've got really beautiful bleachers in there that probably need to be refinished and redone, and so let's, let's put some plaques on those, let's sell some of those, the picture, the picture pieces, the collage pieces. Bring in our corporations and our businesses around town who are willing to help with this project, and let's honor them while they're helping our community and our school too. The heating is one that I know you guys know a lot about, that needs to be done right away, is that heating repair, and we've talked to FES and Purple Pride about that, and we're already kind of working on that behind the scenes. I think some fun things we can do is save the rink yard signs, window decals, save the rink apparel, there's just really endless ideas that we can do with this. And we can also start to have some community events in there that we're not doing right now. I think it was great, Tim Ringhoffer and Jessica, you were in the committee, you brought back that tournament this year, I think that's step one, I think we can start to do more of those things and start to really make Bronco Arena the center of this community, because it already is. And it's really kind of the center of the state. Anywhere I go, I hear people talking about Bronco Arena. They, people love Bronco Arena, and it's not an exaggeration. Anywhere you go, you say, I'm from my Falls, oh my gosh, Bronco Arena, people love this arena. And so let's make it even more beautiful than it is, and let's make sure that it's there long-term for, and for our kids.
There's lots of wall space in there to put the murals.
Lots and lots of wall space.
I think that's a great idea.
Stair risers.
Yes, and behind the bleachers and, or underneath the bleachers.
Lots and lots of space.
That's awesome.
Next one?
Yeah, there is one more. Okay. So I kind of mentioned, you know, it's going to take, it's going to be a multifaceted approach to a multifaceted campaign, so I do think we're going to have to have a space under our, probably our school website, or maybe we create a whole other website, social media, and I think newsletter is going to be a big piece of this too. And, you know, we can take advantage of the newsletters that are already out there. FES is already doing newsletters, we can put ads in there, we can do our own newsletters for this effort, really just make it as big as we can. And I know that this, when we get this going, we can replicate this across the district. Like I said, with the football, with Sheila Field, with, you know, we talked about making this an innovative center in here, we could just start to do this all over the school district.
Is there a dollar goal for the arena? Like, do we know where we want to hit?
Well, I know that the heater, he's about fifty thousand.
Forty-five or fifty.
Yeah, so how this evolved was, obviously, we do not, we're committed to our, from the tax base and referendum, we're committed to what we said we would do with those dollars, and that is really important to all of us. So when we started really looking at some of the dire needs that were starting to unfold with some of our historical facilities, we found out that fifty percent of our ceiling heater is out in Bronco Arena, and what the custodians and rink team had to do over this winter to scrape the acrylic glass on the ice rink, whatever that's called, the boards, to keep it open so you could see it. They just, they had to do all that by hand because they could not take out the ceiling unit because it extends the entire, on the rooftop of Bronco Arena. So that's just a short-term immediate fix, and that is fifty thousand dollars. But when we started really looking at the brick and we started looking at the aesthetics side of the, these historical sites, Bronco Arena, the pool, we started visiting other schools, and they really invest in their athletic facilities, and some of us have talked about it. So, you know, buying a brick and recognizing, you know, Bronco cheerleader, figure skater, and the years and the name, you know, there's so many different things in addition to just creating a very welcoming educational space, but instead of having fundraisers where you don't see anything from the fundraiser, we really felt, this team really felt that it was important that we gave back to the community to make sure that we are, we are serving bruisers, some of those spaces that we just, we are not going to be able to fund with the referendum, and just make them more appealing and beautiful to people who come and visit, and to have Bronco pride. When we have our people come into our Bronco Arena, or we go into Falls High School, or the pool, or the stadium, we want them to leave with a memory that we do it right, and we want to have that pride in all of our facilities, in addition to the educational platform that we present to our visitors.
So kind of what we did here was put together a list of things, like on our facilities, like our ten-year plan, our long-term facilities plan, put together a list of things that we think need to be done at the arena, and then prioritize them?
Yeah. So one of the things that I just met with, I met with CISO this morning, and this is a campaign that we can do. They felt very excited to know that this would be an offering to help beautify in partnership with the referendum and construction work, so, but it's, it's something that, you know, we can continue to do this investment for years to come, and like Ashley said, you know, maybe the next project is going to be the pool or the stadium, but we've got some really neat historical figures here, and we also have athletic activities that have evolved over time, and I think that could be a really, a nice asset to the district, and this team was very excited about it. We met with Mr. Thompson and Mr. Dalton, and so the next step will be to look for volunteers, bring in Mr. Ringhoffer, and away you go.
Awesome.
I think it's really important to note that, you know, when we talk about Bronco Pride all the time, you guys are the ones spearheading that effort, this is a really good opportunity for our kids in our school district right now to see what that's all about, and to start to feel a pride and a ownership in a piece of their history and a piece of their school right now. I mean, we could start this next week and get them involved, and I think it can really bring our organizations together, it can bring our rooster clubs together, it can bring our teams together, as well as alumni together. I mean, I'm not even from here and I want, I wanted to do this project, so I think it can really just bring, and we know, the climate right now is kind of dire everywhere, and this is something that we can all do together.
It's great, thank you.
Well, I think there's a lot of untapped potential across the country from former Broncos. I mean, Brenna is a senior, and she just finished her hockey season, and she looked at me one day and said, I'm a Bronco alumni, I'm a hockey alumni. I said, yes, you are. So, you know, I mean, there's pride there, that these kids are seventeen, eighteen years old realizing that they're a Bronco alumni.
Yep, and the reach that the alumni have.
Yep.
And where they're living and.
Yes, I mean, all over the country.
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Wonderful presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great idea.
All right, so a motion by Bruce and a seconded by Jessica to approve the historical Bronco Arena preservation project for the Bronco Arena fundraiser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Tina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.